Row call.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Costner.
Here.
Alderman John Doug.
Here.
Alderman Freddie Greg.
Here.
Alderwoman Kathy Holt. Here. Alderman Kenny Morgan.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincher.
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the approval of the minutes. Our meeting on February 11, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. We don't have anything under proclamations this evening. Correspondence from interim city administrator James Fincher.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everybody may have noticed the work that was going on last week down at the two properties on the Riverwalk that we purchased last year. We did the asbestos abatement, has been completed. They have sent their report to the state and as soon as the state sends their green light to us, we'll move forward with the demolition. We'll be contacting the company that was awarded that bid and tell them they can move forward as soon as possible. The last week at the workshop, I reported to y'all that we had had a sinkhole up at Javos. And what we have found since we started working into it is that it was not a sinkhole, it was actually a storm drain breach and partial collapse. Once they got back farther back away from where the camera couldn't get to, the NUB came in and helped us run the camera up in there. And where they were able to run it to, they couldn't find any bad places. But once they got further up the line, they found that we're gonna have to replace some of the pipe. So I just wanted to clear that up because I did report that was a sinkhole, but it is actually a waterline malfunction. Some of you brought your audits tonight, we're not gonna be discussing that, but we did get those out to you last week. We will be setting up a date that's convenient to everybody with Frank to come in and go over that with you in the coming weeks. The audit is on time this year, that's something to take and pride in. A lot of that credit goes to Tina, the hard work she put in to make sure that happened because that was a major goal that we had coming into this year was to make sure the audit got back on time so we can get the budget on time. And that brings me into my last item, and that is the budget. We have begun working on it, she and I have been collaborating a few hours each day, working on it. She's got things out to the departments for them to fill out, and some of those have already come back. So I'm confident we'll have a budget on schedule this year. I'm not real confident about the revenue, but I'm real confident about the budget. So that's all we've got, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions? Item six, we've got a couple of items. Item A is the appointment of a NUB member to replace Danny Lindsey, whose term expired. A question about that is, does he serve the month of April or will the new appointee Terry serve in that position?
It begins April 1st.
Will start in April?
The term starts April 1st, Mayor, that's why we had to have it on the agenda this month because the term begins April 1st.
Okay. That question had been asked to me by one of the people that was interested. Okay, I think the normal protocol is to ask for nominations. Out of the list that we have, is anybody withdrew, these names that are on here are still...
Not to my knowledge. No one has informed us they have withdrawn.
The only one that we did mark off was Josh Burgen because he was ineligible.
Yes.
So the rest of them still...
And next year, the next one, we'll try to be more, make sure that that gets better, publicize the requirements.
Okay, alright. Do we have any nominations?
Mayor nominated Mike Profit.
I nominate Philip Gregg.
I nominate Jason Ramsey.
Jason Ramsey.
I nominate Don Collins.
Let's call for nominations. Do we have a motion to cease nominations?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. We'll vote on these by row call, alphabetically. Okay, alphabetically, Don Collins is the first one. Row call, please.
John Doug?
Yes.
Kenny Morgan?
No.
Phil Costner?
No.
Freddie Greg?
No.
Kathy Holt?
Yes.
Okay, didn't receive enough votes. Okay, row call on Philip Gregg.
John Doug?
Yes.
Kenny Morgan?
No.
Bill Costner?
No.
Freddie Greg?
Yes.
Kathy Holt?
No.
Two votes. Not enough, okay. Mike Profit.
John Doug?
Yes.
Kenny Morgan?
Yes.
Bill Costner?
No.
Freddie Greg?
No.
Kathy Holt?
No.
Jason Ramsey.
John Doug?
No.
Kenny Morgan?
No.
Bill Costner?
Yes.
Freddie Greg?
Yes.
Kathy Holt?
Yes.
Okay. Three, okay. Jason Ramsey has been appointed to term to the NUB.
Mayor, could I just say one second and I'm getting ready to leave. I want them to tell them once they did what they said to do, I really appreciate it. It means a whole lot to me, yeah and they appreciate me. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, I would like...
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, the second item under appointments of boards, the Beer Board, L.C., Gregg. I called him and he is willing to serve. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item seven, Tanner Preservation Alliance, anyone here to speak?
None.
Okay. New business. Item A is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2014-01 amending the zoning regulations to permit and regulate sales for tents. You've read that, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item B is consideration of first reading of ordinance 2014-02 to amend the municipal code to permit and regulate sales for tents. Any discussion or a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item C is consideration of using public relations to pay for Christmas lights.
If you all recall at the workshop, I discussed that. We asked, at the end of last year, we asked Kelly Stokely if she would be willing to take on a renovation of the Christmas tree. She took that on. She raised, of course, she also took on, again, adding more Christmas lights to the streets, not just that. There was an additional task that she took on. And she has raised all the money she can raise. We asked her to do that. We have a little extra money in our public relations fund and I would just like, I think that we need to just pay that off and take that burden off of her. She got to talking about chili cook-offs and spaghetti dinners and I told her we just weren't gonna let her do that.
How much do we have in that facility?
Ten thousand, I think. Is that right, Tina? Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Any discussion?
It is, 2155, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item D is consideration of resolution 2014-04, the home grant application.
Of course, that's something we've done for the last several years. It's a very popular program, they pay 100%. There's no matching city funds involved. It is to renovate folks' properties, low-income disadvantaged properties. One thing to be aware of, there has been some changes in it. In the past, they would, and it's one thing that's been utilized many times. In the past, if a home was just too far gone, they would tear it down and rebuild a home. That has been removed from the program. So I just want everybody to understand that, that that's not, when we can't do it, if you all choose to do the grant and we get it, which I think we will, there's gonna be folks that's gonna need that and it's kind of a, it's kind of a bad change in my opinion that they made to the program because if your home is not inhabitable, more or less, and it needs to be torn down to grants, I mean, you're out of the grant process. And to me, that's the most needed. So everybody I've talked to about it is in agreement with that. Nobody likes the changes that they've made because you are, you know, you're kind of pushing the people with the most need to decide. Now, they did up the amount, it's $40,000 max that they will do. But some homes can't be repaired and need to be torn down. We've built many over the years, but now this year, that will not be available. So I know y'all be getting phone calls because that's always the way it is, folks needing the assistance, wanting to know what they qualify for. They upped the amount to 40,000, but they'll no longer build you a home. And we've built several, but that's, the state has done that, that is not us. So we don't want, just so we be clear up front. So no one will say, well, you know, y'all aren't doing for me what you did for somebody else. That's in there, we have no control over it. We can only do what they'll allow us to do with the money. And that is something they changed.
At least it's somebody in inspection place that doesn't have anything to do with money, period. All we do is have an account for that money.
Right.
But if he actually comes in and does inspection for all those houses, correct?
Yeah, there's someone does that, yes.
Who's the administrator?
Evan.
And they will have to fill out an application once it is...
Yes, sir. They have to go through the process.
They'll have to fill out an application and then qualify financially.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Yeah, there's a process.
Down here, will they fill the application out down here?
They'll pick it up here, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion? Or do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item E is consideration of resolution 2014-05, the lease purchase agreement with Johnson Controls.
You all are aware, of course, some months back, we went into a contract with Johnson Controls to do renovations citywide to upgrade lights, hot water heaters, HVAC systems to make them more efficient and save money on operations. And like the community center, that one's, the HVAC system that's in the community center is the one that ain't when it was built, like 38 and eight years ago. And we, it's limping along. And so y'all voted to go into a contract with them to do this project. It's an $800,000 project, basically, it's 799,999. I don't know why you left a dollar off, but more or less. But anyway, it's an $800,000 project. We agreed to put 300,000 in funds that we had available from the Vision 2020 project and it was our understanding that they were gonna bring the other 500,000 to the table. And that got to be a miscommunication. Now they've brought the 500,000 to the table, that's what this is. Because it is a lease purchase agreement, it can't be considered as part of the original con... We got a contract with them, but not with the lease purchase. So we have to vote again to do the lease purchase. And that's what this is.
So we're back to where we started, aren't we?
Well, no, we've got a contract with them to do the project. This is for the funding, the 500. It's two separate issues. We voted to do the project and we signed a contract with them to do the project, to do the upgrades and the installations. But then when it come time for the funding, there was misunderstanding between us and them. They got the idea, because we were talking about our bond refunding that night, and they're here if you have questions for them. But we were talking about, it's when we were doing our refinancing of our variable rate funds that night, they got the idea that we were borrowing more money to pay the whole project. And so they didn't have, this lease purchase agreement was not in the contract we signed with them. This just adds this to that. The contract we signed with them for the work is active, but the funding part was not included in the original contract, so this is the funding part. If it had all been together, we could have voted on all of it at one time. But this is the addition of the funding and we just have to vote on to approve the funding. The rates are in there, the things like what you showed, we've actually, it ended up being just a little bit cheaper. Tina's looked at it, you have questions, she can answer, but it actually ended up being a little bit lower than what they said at the beginning. So we actually saved a little money by being drug out.
Either way, we were in favor, right?
Right.
For about a 3.449 for 14 years, because it dropped a year, that's what reduced it. Everybody will be upset.
What's your pleasure?
When would this start, this project? When would this project start? We've voted pretty good.
It would take us approximately 30 days to finalize and keep ready.
And if I recall correctly, the estimate was eight months to conclude.
Would it start on the community center?
I don't know what their schedule, I don't know how their schedule goes, I don't know.
Are we gonna start on the community center first? Is that, Tim, is it working good enough, Mayor, or is it...
Well, we don't have AC going right now, so the only thing we've got is the heat going, so we don't know. It probably has to be charged and you're talking four, five tanks to charge it.
I mean, I'm sure they could do it. If that's what, if that's your pleasure, I'm sure they could probably make that happen.
Knowing that, and obviously we'll order that equipment first, it's probably, I'd have to check on the lead time, but I would assume probably typical six weeks lead time that we would be going.
I think they're in the most need.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We'll order that, we'll go right away, for sure.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item M is consideration of agreement between the city of Newport and T-Dot, is that what?
Yes, sir.
That's, you want me to explain that?
Yeah.
Okay. There was a question on the information we got from the Department of Transportation concerning, the city always signs an agreement that they're responsible for red lights once they're installed. Like the three that we've had down here, they paid the bill, once they were installed, it became the city of Newport's obligation to maintain them. This, that's in your folder tonight, as I talked to Nathan Vatter before the meeting, is the two new red lights that's up for installation down here. We're just signing and agreeing that once those lights are put up, that we're gonna keep them up. Basically is what we're doing. So we just need a vote.
Okay, where's it down here, Connie?
This end of town. The National Bank and the library.
Okay.
The two on this, you know, that we've went through the process on getting those, so that's what we're, that's what this is about. Any discussion, questions, or a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none. Item G is consideration of utilizing borrowed money for building repairs.
Okay, back to the Vision 2020 money. Okay, we had, at the beginning of this fiscal year, we had $465,000 in the Vision 2020 money, which is the money we borrowed a year ago. We voted to do 300,000 of that with Johnson Controls for the upgrade project. We budgeted $25,000 this year to do the project down here with the properties we did, the abatement, and we're gonna tear it down, and gotta build a fence and all that. That leaves $140,700 left in that fund. What I would like to do, I would like your permission to spend 35,000, $40,000 of that for building repairs to existing buildings. That is what we borrowed the money for originally, was to purchase properties and renovation of existing city properties, primarily city hall. And so we have, I've had department heads look around at their places, we've got multiple problems in multiple locations. At fire hall number two, you've got the wall that's rotted down, cabinets are falling off the wall, termites have eaten up. You've got rotted wood down at fire station number one with the fascia boards are rotted. We've already replaced the roof, but the fascia boards weren't replaced. On the east side of the police department, there's no guttering. You've got flooring that's got holes in it, you've got broken doors, you've got broken ceiling tiles. And I, you know, here, we've got, we had water damage where we had some roof leakage and we had the roof repaired, but the damage is still there. And we need to repair that. We borrowed, we did Tina's office, but that's about all we can do without some funds. So I'd just like your permission to access those funds, we won't spend them more than we have to. You'd be welcome to look at anything we're doing to make sure, any questions you have or anything. But the money was borrowed for renovations, as part of the money was, that's what is to be utilized for. And I think that, you know, it's like anything, if you don't maintain your properties, they're only gonna get worse. So I'd just like your permission to spend 30,000, $40,000 of that roughly, based on the estimates I've had the guys get, to try to fix some of this stuff.
James, would that include the roof repairs or...
I don't have that in that number, but that's something that needs to be done.
It really does before, you know, there's quite a few leaks in it.
Yeah.
And it's a great storage facility, but if we don't repair it...
Yeah, that's...
Then it's gonna get beyond repair, then we've just got a shell.
I think that the estimate on that for the roof repair was $18,000 and that is not included in that number.
They're willing to say 50,000, yeah. And that would include that and give you a couple thousand, maybe.
Okay. Yeah, anything you could give me, I'd appreciate it because we desperately need some of these repairs.
Well, I'll make the motion, we're making 50,000.
Are we gonna get bid or are we just... We have to bid it, yeah.
Well, it's all piecemeal, I mean, it's not one big project. It would just depend on what it is.
Are we gonna do it not to exceed? That's what you're saying?
Yeah. Not to exceed 50,000?
Because we wouldn't, we're not like trying to find a contractor that's gonna come in and do all of this. We'll do what we can ourselves, much as we can.
So unless it goes over...
Well, 5,000 has to be bid. If it's over 5,000, it has to be.
So if it's, when you go do the roof...
Yeah, we'd have to bid the roof, yes.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, not to exceed 50,000.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? I hear none.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes. Item H is consideration of request of sponsorship for Sarah Stokely, Miss Tennessee pageant.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I want to thank you personally for recognizing me with the certificate for community service. That was a wonderful surprise to come home to. I know it's hard because I'm at school and I can't be here as much. And I'm here tonight because it's spring break and I'm able to be here instead of being at my 5 o'clock class. So why I'm here is I would like to request a sponsorship, I guess you would call it, for a page for the Miss Tennessee program book. It was something that you all did last year and I wanted to show it to you. It's this one on your right, if you all want to see. A full page is $300, but $100 of that will go to me. With your help last year, I was able to sell 32 pages total and receive $3,200 towards school, which is an amazing feeling because I haven't had to pay for school yet and I know that others do not have that opportunity. My goal this year is to set the all-time record. The original one is 50 right now and I want to at least get 51 so I can have my name in the books. If it can't be for Miss Tennessee, I would like to have it in the books for selling the most ad pages and having all of the community support. So if you all are financially able to, I would greatly appreciate a full page from you if you are able to do that.
I'm gonna defer that to my finance district.
Okay, your own.
Under the, under the main, city hall, we do have enough funds in public relations.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll say it.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? Let it be written.
All right, thank you. And thank you for, I guess, just initiating the public relations for helping with the Christmas lights. I know that my mother greatly appreciates that, so we don't have to do the spaghetti dinners and everything, so thank you for that as well.
We appreciate you more.
Thank you.
Not more than your mother.
Oh, right, right.
Same. Okay, let's get that clear, we don't wanna hurt her feelings. Item I is consideration of request for sponsorship for Gradfest 2014.
Can we not give them that much? We're not doing that. That's probably the best program in the world.
Gradfest.
How much do we have in public relations?
Sorry.
How much do we have in public relations?
Well, at the beginning of the night, we had 10,000. We spent 2,200. Well, actually, we spent about 2,500 of them.
You're good.
You're good.
You're good.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion? Well, I was gonna go with 1,000, but we got that kind of money.
Well, the year's not over yet.
Yeah, you've still got a lot to go for public relations, brother.
Yeah, that's just tonight.
You'll have Tina having a heart attack over here.
It's on you now, Mr. Gregg. I still, my motion stand out. I'm making a motion to give him 1,000 dollars.
What did you say we gave him in the past?
25? I'll make that motion.
25 dollars.
Send them...
25.
Yeah, not 2,500, 25 dollars.
That's how we get it, right? I still stick to my 1,000.
Okay, we got a motion for 1,000 dollars. Did we have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes no? Hear none.
And I was worried about talking in front of you guys.
Well, the floor's still open. Everybody's got five minutes if you need...
Oh, no, that's a...
Is that, that's nothing.
Yeah, and actually, we're on next too, so I'll just stay right here.
Roadblocks. We, we do have consent agenda, so you don't have to say anything unless you want to.
Well, they didn't tell me that.
We're going to vote on all six of them at the same time.
Well, thank you all. I mean, I truly appreciate it, because we have had a struggle trying to get everything taken care of for GradFest, and not as much participation as in the past, I don't think. So I do appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you all do.
Mayor, so that you know they've lifted GradFest to Thursday night instead of doing it on Friday night, because the graduation's going to be on Thursday.
Yes.
And so it's going to be a request coming from us for the police department, because it's going to be done on Thursday night instead of Friday night.
Okay.
Tim James is smiling already.
Yeah. Well, it is a good, it is a great event, and it is, there's a lot of, a lot of kids participating. It's been going on for many years, and I think it's been a success every year.
Can't do enough for the kids, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, it takes a lot of work. I know I've been involved two years since I had two daughters who graduated high school in the last 10 years, so it takes a lot of work. Raise that money, and every penny they earn and raise is well spent.
Okay, the consent agenda. Item J's got six roadblocks in it. I'm assuming they all meet the specifications. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Before we vote, Mayor, I've, I've noticed that at, at the last roadblock, and I'm not saying that Tim, y'all bought the vest, they were real, they wasn't real bright. I bought 10 new vests for those people to wear on these roadblocks, so they can be seen. I ain't patting myself on the back, but I, I worry about them people now with them plastic vests on, so I, I bought those out of my money from the city. We figured it out, and it, it's number two vest that's got a reflector on it, so for after, and you better be 18 years old. I make a motion.
Got a motion? Got a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
May I ask a question? The roadblock last weekend, there was no identification. I have no idea who those people were. Are they supposed to have a sign or something or something to? Because sometimes we want to help people, but I didn't know who they.
I don't know if there's any.
I was asked that same question. I got a call about it Saturday by one of the, the chief supervisor at the police department, brought up that same issue. We, we don't require that they have a sign. I don't think it's a good policy for them, you know, because as Ms. Lambert said, you know, if I don't know who I'm given to, I'm not, probably unless I know somebody standing there that's participating, I'm probably not going to stop and put anything in the, in the bucket. You know, I don't think it's a good tactic on their part, not to have a sign out there, but there, it is not regulated by us that they have to have one.
All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. One item under bids, consideration of bids for used oil equipment for the used oil grant.
Uh, yes. That's the, the grant we got to do the oil recycling out there. They required that we, we bid it out, and the only thing I don't get about it, and of course, these grants come by with these crazy stipulations that you have to abide by, is it, there's three things that have to be bided out, and you got to bid them out one at a time. I don't get that. Looks to me like you could bid them all out at the same time. But anyway, this is the first part, and it's the, I think, probably the biggest piece of it. But we received four bids, and of course, Ben's here, he can, he can elaborate on it if you need, you know, if you want more information on it.
Hey, Ben, I, I've noticed these, have you looked at, you looked at the bids, have you?
I just looked over it, and I, I searched when they opened it.
Have you got a recommendation?
Well, the one is local, is Wilton Springs Hardaway, and he's just, what, $300, $200 more, and I'd rather deal with a local person. We have problems with.
You may, I, I agree with you.
Is there any stipulation in the grant to take the little bid?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yes, I, I make the motion, we accept the Wilton Springs bid.
We got a motion?
I'll second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, no? I hear none. Did receive a thank you letter to the City of Newport from the Boys and Girls Club on the 10,000 annual donation that we made to them, and also a thank you card from Terry and Renee, and the family.
And I think that you personally.
Comments from citizens?
I, I have a question.
Yes.
The council has MOU from the Community Design Center to prepare a plan for the Jenner Building. We submitted that maybe a month ago, and we're needing 2,800 and sit your cash back plenty tonight. You know, we really could use that, that money to further that process.
Did you put in a request?
Yes, we did.
For the 2,800?
Well, I don't know exactly how much. I did not submit the request, but I think James, James has the MOU, and it's.
I have, I don't, I don't recall any requests for an amount. They talked about a memorandum of understanding for them to have, you know, to do the work, but I don't. But I don't, I don't remember a request for funds. I don't recall that. I mean, if that's in there, I may miss.
And what was that for again, the study?
It's for the Community Design Center to come up with a plan for the Jenner Building firstly, to go back into that building, what, what is needed, and what the capacity of the building.
So we owe that, or we, I read, we owe, or y'all owe it?
Well, that's their fee. That's their fee.
I think that's what she's requesting.
Just to pay their fee.
That we pay it.
Being honors of the building, I think it would be a good idea.
I don't know. What you'd want us to take it out of, I don't know, because that'd be unbudgeted money. You'd have to, you'd have, we'd have to appropriate the funds from somewhere.
Can you look into it?
Yeah, I'll look into it.
With that, with that project we're talking about, maybe.
What's, what's Terry think about that?
Well, I, I, I think everyone's on his agenda, so it'd be hard to vote on it tonight. But we certainly could take it up at any time, a call meeting, or a, the next regular meeting.
But what I'm talking about.
I mean, if it's urgent to get the.
Bring it up, but I want to know if it's legal.
To do what now?
I want to know if it's legal.
I'm not exactly sure what we're doing, to be honest. I'd like to see the request and who it's coming from, where the money's going, and before I answer that question.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you all doing job.
So if somebody will share those documents with me, I would like to take a look at them.
The council should have the documents. Last council, I think, Mayor, while you had a copy of that, you know, you.
I probably did, but I don't recall it.
Okay, we'll get that.
Okay.
I remember talking about it, but I don't, I don't remember seeing the document.
That's all I can remember, you know, I probably got it, but, I mean, it, not on the agenda, I didn't bother to look up anything, so.
At that, like, when we talked last about it, I was under the impression that you were going to bring somebody in to do that, but I don't remember you asking for any funding.
We talked about, because they, they asked for access, and we talked about that we would make the building available to them at any time they want. And we had already, you know, pretty much we already been doing that. And so that was what I remember we discussed last time. I do know that there was a mention of a memorandum of understanding. Don't remember any amount of dollars.
I don't know.
So Terry can look over the paperwork? And if, if it's, there's necessary to, if it's necessary to have a call meeting at some point in time, we, we can do that, or it can be on the next council meeting, whatever we, we think we need to do, Terry.
Community Design Center are a good, I mean, it's a good organization.
Yeah, it is.
Without a doubt.
Can you wait to the next meeting with that, or are they rushing you for the money?
We don't have to say last.
Do you know what portion that is of the overall money?
What?
The 2,800, is that 50% or, or did they cut?
That's the fee. They're, that's 50% of their fee.
Their normal fee.
They're, they're going to donate 50% of, it's actually about 5,800.
So they're going to donate?
Half.
Half. Okay. Any other comments on that? Any other citizens comment? Do we have a motion adjourned?
I'll make my motion.
Second? Anybody opposed?